All right, we're going to call the May regular board meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here. We'll move into approving the April 13th, 19th, and May 1st minutes. Entertaining motion to approve.
Motion.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then we have a student presentation.
Yes, I had the pleasure of being with DECA for five days at the International Career Development Conference, and spent time with Ms. Siler, Ms. Barrett, and thirty DECA members. And through, and I'll have Ms. Siler say a few things about it. There are several competitions that happened during DECA, several days of the conference, and lots of judging, and my wife and I judged some events as well. And Mr. Justin Atha was a top twenty finalist that presented in the next round of projects, and was recognized at the conference. But I'll let Ms. Siler say a few things about DECA, and then we'll let Justin present his project to you.
Sure. Well, one of my favorite things to talk about is current technical education, so I could be here till tomorrow, but I know you probably would like to go home at some point in time. So Justin and I represent the marketing program of study at Alma High School. Our school district has several different programs of study in career technical education that students can begin being involved with in the middle school and then all the way through high school. And each of these different programs of study attach themselves to different career clusters that are part of the sixteen career clusters that our nation recognizes as our necessary areas of study and skill sets that students need to be able to enter the world of work, or their careers, or college, and then life back to college. So the marketing program obviously focuses on entrepreneurship and hospitality tourism, and marketing, business management, business administration. We get a lot of business people. There's several different programs and several different CTSOs at our high school and through our middle school that students can join and take part in the very unique structured learning as well as the activities that go along with it. So DECA has over fifty different competitions, and Justin chose one that's in the entrepreneurship area. And the one he chose is called Startup Business. So I heard someone be talking about Shark Tank, so if you've seen some Shark Tank. It's a little bit like that. DECA does have some, well, everything in DECA, as well as all of the other CTSOs, are tied to standards and then tied to that career cluster. And so it's all industry-based and provides students that those skill sets that they need that can help them in their lives. So Justin's dealt with just how do you start up a business? Where does that innovative idea come from? And so he's going to share that with you tonight. Feel free to ask him questions. He said, "I think you can ask me some questions." Probably. So feel free to ask him some questions when he's done. And so, Justin, I'm going to let you show what you did. So we're real proud of you.
All right, come on.
All right. Hello, my name is Justin Atha. Today I'll be presenting a business that will revolutionize the e-commerce industry. This business is YieldMarket.com. YieldMarket.com is an online auction website where the sellers can be. Have you ever attempted to purchase something off the internet only to end up scrolling for what feels like hours to find what you're looking for with a low price and a justible seller? Just for the low price to be raised by bidding wars with other buyers? If so, that's what YieldMarket.com is aiming to solve with our unique and innovative online auction website. There are three main problems with traditional online auction websites that we are aiming to solve with YieldMarket.com. The first one is the difficulty for buyers to find low prices due to bidding wars with other buyers raising the price of each bid. We aim to solve this with our auction system, which is built to lower prices. We have achieved this by instead of having buyers bidding over other buyers and raising the prices with each bid, we have sellers bidding under other sellers, lowering the prices with each bid, seeing how low they're willing to go to make a sale, almost like a game of Price-Limbdown. The third problem we are aiming to solve is rampant scamming due to the easy exploitability of the traditional online payment system. We aim to solve this with our anti-scam payment system, which is a system that we will have that will make scamming for both buyers and sellers virtually impossible. Before I can explain what makes our anti-scam payment system so great, I have to explain what makes the traditional payment system so exploitable. The traditional payment system usually goes something like this. The buyer pays the price of the item, the buyer's payment is transferred to the seller's account, and the seller is supposed to ship the item after they have the buyer's money. There is one key problem with this. The buyer has, the seller has both the buyer's money and item. Meaning that they could just keep both and scam the buyer. Now, we aim to solve this by when the buyer's payment is transferred, instead of immediately giving it to the seller's account, we will hold on to it ourselves and only transfer it to the seller's account when the buyer's package has reached their home. We can track this using a package shipping code, which is a code you can put into the internet and see the exact location of the package at any time. So we wait and see when the buyer's package reaches their home. We wait two days, just in case the buyer wants a refund, and then we transfer the buyer's money to the seller's account. This stops both the buyers and sellers from having both the money and the item at the same time, making it virtually impossible for them to scam each other. The next problem we are aiming to solve is the difficulty for buyers to find exact items due to buyers having to scroll through thousands of different sellers' listings. Now, we are aiming to solve this by instead of having buyers scrolling through thousands of sellers' listings, all the buyer has to do is make a singular buyer request post stating what they want, some additional information like color, size, and other variants, and then the starting cost, which will be underbid. Then they post it, and then the sellers will come to them. Now is a good time to explain how the website will look and work. Here is the main seller hub, as you can tell between the two tabs, it's like buyer and seller. As you can see, the buyer hub has one main tool to the buyer's disposal. This is the buyer request post, as pointed out earlier. Now, due to us wanting the shopping experience to be as easy and as simple as possible for the buyer, this is the only webpage they will have to visit to make a purchase. This will be the first thing people will see when they type in YieldMarket.com. Now, if you were going to sell something, you would click the seller tab, and it would bring you here. This is the main seller hub. As you can see, the main seller hub has two main tools for the seller's disposal. They have the search engine, which they can use to search up items they want to sell and find buyer request posts of that item, and the item alert. An item alert is a very useful tool to sellers because it is a system that we've put onto the website that will alert a seller whenever a buyer request post is made of an item. So for example, if you wanted to sell something, but there are no buyer request posts for that post at the moment, you'd just say the name of the item you want to sell, the category of the item, and then whenever anyone in the world makes a buyer request post of that item, you'll be alerted immediately, allowing you to view the buyer request post, start underbidding, and hopefully make a sale. Now let's look at the search engine. So let's say you are seller and you had, let's say, a blender, a new unused blender that you wanted to sell. You just click on the search engine, you type in "new blender," and it would show you this. It would show you every buyer request post for a new blender on the website. It will show you the name, the additional information, and the current cost of the buyer request post. Most importantly, it also shows you the option to underbid the buyer request post. If you click this button, it would allow you to put any price you want for that item. The only restriction for the price is that it would have to be lower than the current cost of the buyer request post, so that whenever any seller underbids an item, it has to go lower and cut the cost for the buyer. Continuing on, YieldMarket.com's primary market is the seller, the buyer. They're focused on buying and saving money through the website. They have an income range of $31,048 to $93,000 and $413 annually, with a potential global market of 825 million people. YieldMarket.com's secondary market is the seller. Their main function on the website is to sell and make money through the website. They have an income range of $73,054 to $200,000 annually, with a potential global market of 730 million people. YieldMarket.com is unique from other online auction websites because we are completely focused on customer experience alone, making the shopping experience easier for the buyers in every way possible by making them go through the least amount of work to get the items they love. YieldMarket.com has four main ways of advertising. Our first channel is social media ads, specifically Facebook, LinkedIn, Instagram, and Twitter ads. Our second channel is Google AdWords with a budget of $500,000. With this, if anybody searches up anything related to YieldMarket.com like buy, sell, or auction, we'll be one of the first results to pop up. Meaning that we'll get seen by more people, get more traffic on the website, and hopefully make a few more sales. Our third channel is an email list with a budget of $15 a month. With this, we'll send updates and advertisements of our website to our target markets, allowing them to get awareness of the website. Our fourth and most important channel is word-of-mouth advertising. Now, unlike other channels, you cannot put a specific budget on word-of-mouth advertising. Instead, we put that money into making our website the best quality service it can possibly be. YieldMarket.com has three main ways of making revenue. Our first and biggest revenue stream is we'll take fifteen percent of all final sales costs. So for example, if we make our predicted average sales cost of $6, we'll make about $1 per sale. Our second revenue stream is selling ad space. We'll sell space in our website for other companies to advertise their products through. We'll make from one quarter to $1 per advertisement on the website. Or per review on an advertisement on the website. Our third revenue stream is a premium subscription for the cheap price of $5 a month. This subscription will favor the buyer's request post by the algorithm, meaning that when a buyer makes a request post of an item they want, and then a seller searches up an item they want to sell, their request post will be one of the first to pop up. Meaning that they will be seen by more buyers, more sellers, get more underbids, and get a cheaper price in a faster amount of time. As you can see in our cost structure, most of the cost for a big YieldMarket.com has went into the marketing of the website, with Google AdWords taking seventy point two percent of the cost structure, and Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and LinkedIn ads each holding seven percent of the cost structure. This green part here is the potential patent for $2,000, and this yellow sliver is the coding, trademark, and copyright of the website. We have decided to put most of our funding into the D marketing because we are aware that YieldMarket.com as a website needs people to function. Without enough buyers and no one to underbid the, there's no one for the sellers to sell to, and without enough sellers, there's no one to underbid the buyer's request posts. So that's why we have put most of our money into marketing, so that we can get a large audience in a fast amount of time. YieldMarket.com's advertising key metrics are click-through rate, which you will find by comparing the amount of ad clicks to the amount of ad views. This will show us what percentage of people who see our ads actually end up clicking on them and shows how attention-grabbing our ads are. Our second advertising key metric is shares, which you will find by comparing the amount of ad shares to the amount of ad views. This will show us what percentage of people who see our ads actually think is worthy of sharing with their friends and family. YieldMarket.com's website key metrics are revenue per purchase, which we will find by averaging out the final sales cost of every purchase on the website. This will show us how much money we make per sale on average. Our second website key metric is online conversion rate, which you'll find by comparing the amount of website purchases to the amount of website visits. This will show us how much people who go on the website actually end up making a purchase at some point. Now, what advantages does YieldMarket.com have over other competitors in the e-commerce industry? Well, we have a system which is built to lower prices by making the buyers go through the least amount of work possible. We have an anti-scam payment system, which gives both the buyers and the sellers a feeling of security they can't give them anywhere else. And they have a potential software patent for twenty years with a cost of $2,000 that will stop any other companies from copying or mimicking our auction system for twenty years, allowing us to get a foothold in the market. YieldMarket.com is requesting capital investment of $500,000 for twenty-five percent equity of the company. This investment will go into the coding, security, and marketing of the website. If you're willing to invest in us, join us in revolutionizing the online auction industry as a whole. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. I have a question.
Want to check right now?
Cash check?
Got it, Mr. Evans.
Yeah.
That's probably.
How did you come up with this concept?
So I have an online reselling business and use eBay. And I've been both a buyer and a seller on eBay, so I've kind of seen it from both perspectives. And I found a lot of problems with the traditional, the traditional payment system and the auction system. And I think this would just be a much better way to sell and buy things.
Where'd the name, where'd you get the name from?
Okay.
Uh-oh.
So I found the name by turning eBay around and then replacing the A with an O.
Okay.
Now, in hindsight, if I were to actually make this a true website, I'd probably call it Underbid.com because I think that's more memorable. I think it gives off what the website is more, and I think it's easier for people to just, yeah.
Your income numbers on the buyers and sellers, is the, what was your research to get to those?
So to find that, we decided that YieldMarket.com, the whole point for the buyers is for it to go, the price to be lower. So we want people who need lower prices. So we decided to go for middle to lower class for our, financially for our target markets of the buyer. And then on the seller, we were allowed to make it wider because, you know, everybody needs to sell things sometimes. So we didn't make that too limited.
I was sitting here, Ms. Siler, remembering the rubrics because I took lots of notes at the thing and thinking, okay, how would I score this and all that? But obviously, he made the top twenty for the finals, so fantastic, fantastic. Very innovative idea.
Very.
Very good presentation as well.
Thank you.
It's probably worth more than you're thinking. I mean, if you're putting a $2 million valuation on it, right? Five hundred thousand for twenty-five percent, it's worth more than that. I'd only offer somebody ten percent. Just saying. Very good. Any other comments, Ms. Siler?
No, one thing that, you know, Justin's in the marketing program, his sister, Sydney, is, well, she's the outgoing president of TSA, so is, you know, CTSOs and CTE is very representative of Atha family.
Was your older brother in line?
Oh, he was also the president of TSA.
TSA, there you go.
I'm the only actual child that has not been a TSA member.
Very good, very good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That was a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting us share this.
Hey, I appreciate it very much.
Have a nice day.
You too, have a good one.
All right, great job.
There you go.
Just moving on, we don't have any public comment there.
Great.
So we'll move to facilities up ahead.
Mr. Boone and Mr. Ware, you're up.
Alan, you want to give us an update? I'll answer any questions.
Y'all gonna follow that?
No.
It's gonna be good.
Alan's gonna follow that.
Carry on.
Alan's gonna follow that.
Start with the animal barn, so I don't know if y'all have been by lately, but it is completely dry and the roof's on complete, exterior siding's all. Inside's pretty close. We're, we, everything's painted, structure's painted, walls are painted. We're, right now, we're starting to do some exterior paving prep, forming. On the south end, we just got that started. You should start seeing the paving being poured on each end in, over the next couple of weeks. We'll follow right in behind that with vinyl grating, saw, and stuff like that. Inside, right now, most of the trades are pretty close to finished, but not a hundred percent. The electricians are just getting started piping for the lighting. And probably Monday, they'll start putting lights in. And there's a whole bunch of them in there, if you remember the plan. So that's kind of the highlights of it right now. It is, we have secured it, it's, all the doors are on, and it's locked up when we want it locked up, you know, so.
When are you thinking you'll be done with the barn, like done, done?
I'm thinking it's probably going to be midsummer or something. And I'm pushing for pretty close into June here. And there will probably be some, a few loose ends there, which.
Is that something, if it is done, the city, the building inspector would let it be occupied?
Oh, I'm sure they will, yeah.
For sure, okay. Fully completed for that.
Yeah, any, any loose ends, it'll be minor things that should not hamper a C of O.
Yeah, okay, so.
You know, we'll be getting together, as we talked about, the official page about the pens and stuff like that are going in there, and you know, some of that stuff will be going on, you know.
What's the plan on the actual animal occupancy? Do we have a, is there a summer program?
Honestly, that's a, Miss Brumley, we discussed that, and she's slow playing it.
Yeah.
We ordered panels for the goats and sheep side, but we're probably going to build panels for the larger animals.
Yeah.
So she's going to start with goats, I think, at the beginning.
But the plans would be a fully functioning barn somewhere in the middle, somewhere towards the schools, next school year, starting with animals in there, right?
Yes, as far as I know.
That's, that's right. Well, you can.
Because they'll have animals to show by September.
No, they're getting, the kids that have projects for this fall, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we can jump over to the Voag building. We are set up and ready for the last sections of interior slab there, which is the weight room and the bathrooms, mechanical room on the very back of the building there. It's, they've had a hard time getting concrete here for about a week. But let's see, for the bathrooms and mechanical room tomorrow, Monday for the weight room. So that will finish up the interior slabs of that building. And we'll go in about a couple of weeks, it'll take to lay the rest of the bearing masonry walls. And we'll set the steel, and the roofing's scheduled to start about, just a little bit past the middle of June. Is when the roofing will start, which is the big thing we've been waiting on. Once we get that on, we will be able to finish the activity building also. So kind of getting close to the moment I've been looking for, for a long time. It is within, within a couple of weeks of where the original schedule had that, those items happening. So we're really close to what the original schedule said.
What's the estimated completion date on that?
It's, it's in 2024. You know, like, it's going to be September or so before we start interior finishes, probably in there. Of course, it'll finish up pretty quick because it's a block building, but there are a little ways to go. That's, that's about all I have on the Voag. They'll be back, I think it looks like it's going to be mid-July when we'll have them back to finish the pre-engineered metal building items on the activity building. So they have to follow the roofer from the Voag, so.
Craig, you have anything else to add?
No, I mean, it's, we're affectionately referring to the animal barn as the ark, but.
Hope we don't get that much rain.
Well, you know, if we get that much rain, we proved that that's one of the few spots that'll stay dry over there from the last flood we had. But no, I mean, I think it's one really good, I think the, the metal side is, you know, we wanted it to look like barn wood. I think it's a really nice looking, the inside of the space is going to be tremendous, so.
And we talked about scheduling a walkthrough of that facility at some point for the board.
I think, and June is probably a good month. Let's do it before it gets real hot in July and August. Middle of June, you know, we're going to have all this concrete down at the activity center, so we have good surface to walk, walk on there.
Yeah.
So I'd be more than happy to.
Before the next regular meeting, that, earlier, before we come here to convene or another date? I mean, we could work that out later, but that's, we could do.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, okay.
We could have, you know, we could do it before the board meeting, move the board meeting to the hospitality room in the arena, or something like that.
We could, we'll think of it.
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
We'll look at that.
Let's work on that, let me have.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on, consent agenda, Dr. Uck, you have any?
Yes, there's one addition, you have it on your desk, and that is a retirement notice for Ms. Charlotte Parish that will be added to the resignations for the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Superintendent's report.
Okay, we'll start with Dr. Wood.
Ms. Hugh.
Anything to comment on or say, or have any questions for her, for her report? Nope, Ms. Hugh, she's not going to go through all the words, Zach.
I know, I was a little overwhelmed, nothing. That has nothing to do with that.
Mr. Biggs.
For a year and a half of time, so y'all agreed on that. No, both of those guys have done a tremendous job with me. They inform me on a daily basis, and now it's one for our job foreman, for our job foreman over there. So the construction's been really, really smooth, and they're great to work forward, work with.
I didn't see, the electric buses are a little bit late, is that going to mess anything up?
Not necessarily. We're going to have to worry a little bit about, we got to destroy the old buses to get the new ones, so we have to do some planning whenever that comes in. You know, it might even, if we get them in, we might have to wait till Christmas, two weeks to destroy. There'll be some questions about that, it's too early to discuss.
Yeah, that was a little, when he told me it might be September, even into October, I went, oh.
No. Yeah, it'll be, I mean, we could destroy two and then get to, so we could step it if we need to, but.
And then maybe even better to pace it.
That's right.
Like that.
That's right, so we will have to make a decision on that, it was just too early to know what that is.
It's an excellent fundraising opportunity, to the community, to, you know, fund up some money for the opportunity to destroy it.
Bash the bus, bash the bus.
But I will say, the, because of Mr. Uck, he noticed something out here, just because the pre-k building is going to be built here at some point. We had the electric running too close to the building, so the man knew what he was talking about.
I give credit where credit's given.
Lucky every now and then.
Mister.
But my wife was watching. We moved it out about forty feet, so you see where the white flags are, and that's where the electric was going, sixth floor up to the bus park. That actually was honestly a good one. I don't want to brag on you too much.
I would pay him twenty to say that. Getting good money out of it.
No, but old GND's working well with us on that, and that should be the next month that they start awarding that.
Okay. All right.
Enrollment?
Enrollment for this meeting, 30189. And that'll be, we'll have a, I may send you an end of year, kind of see where we close out May, and then of course, everything resets and roll over and starts over after that. But that's kind of our, of course, third quarter's already determined at 3118 is our third quarter ADM for funding purposes for next school year. And then they take the fourth quarter into account if there's growth funding, mainly for growth funding, if you grew, then you get some funding later to shore up those differences.
I heard it would be to pull a five, ten-year, fifteen-year snapshot of how we ended every year.
They've got it.
Oh, yeah. Did you send that to us?
I mean, I've shared the third quarter average with you, the twenty years' worth of the third quarter average.
Yeah, I just worked it out, skewy it can be throughout the year, I'm just curious in the.
You're talking about like a monthly thing for each year?
No, I'm thinking just into the year, every year for the past ten years.
Oh, yeah, we can get that.
Right, just so we know. I think that, I, I think we continue to see.
Into fourth quarter.
Yeah.
What was our, what's the difference from our 3118 from last year?
It's down about sixty, sixty-one students from previous third quarter. Yes.
You're saying third quarter of last, of last year compared to third quarter this year?
Yes, there's a sixty. It's an average of the first three quarters that determines funding per student for next year, next physical year. So yes, down about sixty, sixty-one. Okay, school choice, a little good news here. Got the numbers, and right now we have thirty-one who have choice to other school districts from Alma, and a hundred and one coming into Alma. Now, of course, people, you know, things happen, it may not be exactly those numbers. I don't have it in your packet, I'm just reporting the numbers. So thirty-one out and a hundred and one in, so that bodes well for us for next year. Okay. Arkansas learns update, the only thing to really update you on, the working groups are forming. I received notification that I've been accepted to be part of the Educated Workforce Group. We meet next week online in our first meeting, and we'll just go from there and see what, what happens on having input on developing the rules. We've had some other administrators apply for groups, and we've had some that, that don't know yet, or some of those other groups are not forming until later. So I think it's workforce, educated workforce, and I believe the empowerment one is first because that deals with choice, deadlines, and all of that. I think those are the first ones to form. So don't have anything new to report on the law or anything like that, at least at this time. Okay. Scholarships, wanted to report this to you. I attended the senior awards assembly. The Alma Education Arts Foundation and mayor, correctly if I'm wrong, I think it was about $130,000 in foundation scholarships given to seniors. I think it was eighty-three seniors who were awarded those scholarships. And the overall total of all colleges and unit. And the overall total of all colleges and universities and other sources, other programs offering our students scholarships was five point one million dollars, I believe, was the total offers for all our students. And from, and not just colleges, there were grant programs, and of course, military and, and other, other sources of scholarship money and other programs. So it was, it was a great event, the highest number of career and technical education completers, highest number of industry certifications that students have earned, not only with our own programs, but through the Peak Innovation Center and UAFS. And it's just, just things get better and better on that at that front every year. Any other comment, Mr. Kirk and all, on that?
The, you know, every year we try to report, what Dr. Duffy just said, we had, we had twelve of our seniors that had scored a third year plus UACTT, which is the second most of all time, only by last year they had thirteen. So that number in itself is amazing, in addition to all the completers and certifications there.
Okay. Uh, let's see, next, dates of interest. There's a commencement, last student day, or staff convocation. And I think I sent you some information on convocation, so you're more than welcome to attend. Mr. Ware does have a function there, so I'll give him details later on that and his script on what he, what he'll do. But it'll be a, a good event. Commencement's always a celebration of all the student, student accomplishments. Convocation will recognize years of service, retirees, teachers of the year, classified employees of the year. Uh, we have a, a few speakers, be a little different flair this time, and maybe a couple of surprises, I don't know yet, you know, we'll, we'll see. We'll see what we have in the works. Uh, but it's always a, a good event every year. So any questions so far, anything? Uh, and I did want to, which we did these mostly last week, maybe the week before, kind of bled into the last week. But our teachers of the year for each building and our classified employees of the year, and this is the first year for that, for each building and then district support. And I just wanted to announce the names so that, that you, you see that. I know we've had it out there, I think, on social media. Amy Benson, teacher of the year for the high school. Uh, she's special education teacher. Sarah Martin, special education teacher for middle school. Jennifer Dumont, fifth grade teacher for intermediate. Miranda Bush, first grade teacher for primary school are their representatives. And we have already started the district process, and I'm going to film two videos tomorrow and then two videos with them, the other two candidates, next Tuesday. Uh, and we've already had the selection panel from other school districts selected that who have agreed to do the interviews with the, the finalists candidates. Our classified staff members of the year for each area district support is Paul Cyrock, who's our bus mechanic. Uh, the high school, Ida Lewis, secretary at the high school. The middle school, Kay Lamar, custodian. At the intermediate school, Amy Nicholson, who's secretary. And the primary school, Lynn Winblad, an instructional assistant. And there, Mr. Biggs will head up the process for determining the selection of the district classified employee of the year. So we'll reveal those. It'll be like the Academy Awards, and we open the envelope, because we won't know until then. We'll have the committee seal it in envelope, and we open it up and announce the name there. So lots of good stuff going on. I know it's a scramble the end of the year with all kinds of activities and multiple activities every night and trying to juggle all of our time to get to things. So just lots of good stuff going on. And I think that's all I had.
Okay, so moving to new business, classified seller schedules and stop and schedules?
Yes, it's on page thirty-one, and so we are ready to embark on getting classified contracts ready. Uh, so that's page thirty-one. This includes, these are, these are all the same structure on schedules. This includes a four percent increase to the base salary of each lane, of each lane. And that is equivalent to the basic learns increase that the teachers got of the two thousand, and that, that treats classified staff the same. So I recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Unless you got any questions on anything.
Entertaining motion to approve.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
School improvement plan.
Yes, this starts on page forty-six, and this is, we did this last year. These are the various, and Dr. Wood may have comments on these, various improvement plans for each school. It's required by the state to have been board reviewed and approved, and we got to upload into the state system. So again, I recommend approval as presented, and we'll entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, child nutrition.
Yes, it's page sixty-six and sixty-seven. Uh, this deals with meal prices, and it's detailed on adult prices and student prices for meals. Entertain any questions you may have, but I do recommend approval of our child nutrition program prices for next year.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Board policies.
Yes, no action required. So the, as Ms. Siler said, she said, well, we, we used some trees today. Yes, we did. Uh, those are the, section three and eight are personnel policies. Section four are student policies. And so this is for thirty-day review. Uh, this represents about six months of work on and off. Uh, the principals and assistant principals went through section four policies, also looking at handbooks. Uh, those will be for next month for thirty-day review handbooks. But this is for year review, follows the ASBA model policy format. And they are read because there were lots of revisions, so basically I'm treating them as new policies. And then going forward, you'll see a lot less read in there. But I just wanted to go ahead and, and make a clean slate and just treat those as newly revised policies on all sections. And these are board policies, recommendations, and then student handbooks. We'll have other details that won't be like this, it'll be that regular format. And there will be a section where I will reference board policies from section four in the handbook. Uh, but you'll see those next month for thirty-day review.
Do you have additional version that just shows the updates to current?
No. Now, what I can, what I can do is send the current board policies. And then you've got these, I can send these electronically. But these are. I took the original manual for ASBA policies and compared and integrated changes. And there were some policies that were very, very short that we just needed to add things to. But I could send that so you could at least see policy before, policy after. And there's some policies there that we did not have in those sections as well.
But nothing that would show current versus what's added and read?
No.
Nothing, okay.
No, not on this round. Going forward, there will be.
Okay.
Well, if you want to see that, I can give you, I can send the current sections.
Well, I just think instead of having to read every page of everything.
Well, that's, I understand.
Be able to see what's new or changed or updated.
But you're saying there's so much change, most of it would be redlined.
Yes. Not that anything's wrong, it's just there was so much rewording and all. But, but I can send those too, so you could do a side-by-side if you wanted to, if you wanted to do that. But going forward, you will have that because our formatting will match that.
Well, let me ask, maybe, I don't want another, another set of.
I understand.
Plans, but what about how these differ from the ASBA model policies? Is there a red line of that or?
No, there's not going to be much difference. There may be, and I could go through and point out, there's a few things that we kept the same language in some personnel policies that we had. And some of the student policies do exactly match, especially on the student discipline piece, match what our current policy is. But there was still some other rewording we did on that. So, but I can, in the interim, I can provide whatever you all need on that.
Can we get a digital copy of these?
Sure, yeah, I can send those to you, no problem, no problem.
You know, digital is of the existing is what.
Of the existing, and these too. I just, I just thought if you're going to look through in paper, you know, your, our eyes all cross when we look at the screen so long on things. So I can do that too, sure, not a problem, not a problem at all.
Anything else on board policies?
So I guess it's, take these, Barrett's going to read them all. And then when we come back, excuse me? And then when we come back, then we will vote. The adjustments do all that. Unless you feel you need more time, but typically I, I give a thirty-day review, and by the next board meeting, there's a vote to approve, revise, or need more time on some. That, that's how, and that's how it'll be on the handbooks, you have a thirty-day review on the handbooks.
I like.
In June, and then July would be the time to, to take any action.
Okay. Will the handbooks have a edits-only version, the red? Is that something you're in the middle of that can be done?
Well, let's just say I gave them a different format on sections to use. So I'll see what the principals have.
That's fine.
May or may not, depends, because I've given them very specific sections to put in the handbook.
Anybody not, not near this, obviously.
Right.
That's a lot to read.
Well, yes, it is.
Know what's changing, so.
I got you.
Okay.
Dr. Wood?
The handbooks are, are probably not, because we just have kind of worked through the year changing, so they didn't already own that format, but it's not near as much as that to go through.
And then what I can say going forward, then we'll have that.
There's some pretty big changes in it, but I liked what I saw. I thought it was more consolidated, it's not the right word, but from across the board, make it treated more cohesive and I thought it looked good, everyone was saying.
Okay, all right. Appreciate it. Moving on to assurances?
Yes, this is on page sixty-eight, this is an annual thing every year. Ms. Burksfield is here, this is for special ed funds. It basically says that we're going to spend the money how it's supposed to be spent, or there's a problem, and you're going to have federal agents at your door. Is that right, Ms. Burksfield? Anyway, that's just, that's just we're going to spend for the allowable expenditures in special ed, and it's required Mr. Ware signs one place, and I sign one place, and then we send it into the state.
Move to approve.
So I recommend approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and finally, in new business, recommendation for.
Yes, page seventy-six and seventy-seven, and you have the listing there, and I recommend approval as presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Before you, Jared, I think we call a brief executive session.
Say brief.
Don't say brief unless you mean it.
Down the state behind me.
Yeah. Yeah.
I moved to it, Jerry.
Seven forty-two, we're back.
I moved to it, Jerry.
Second hall of fame. In quotes.
Go.